The budget, uh, budget meeting held April 12th, 2022. I showed the time at 5:06 and sure we have a full form here. And, um, first off, we need to, um, no one's participating remotely. So I'll need first off an adoption of this agenda.
Louie.
Somebody. What'd you say?
Here we go.
It begins.
Did I, did I say it right?
So always in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye from the kitchen.
Okay.
Push your asses. Um, next up, who's, we have discussion of fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Wait, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna go to her but then I wasn't sure which one, so.
So, um.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I always think you want to leave.
So this is actually going to be really easy. Um, we've actually got the budget balance last time.
Woo-hoo, good job ladies!
Presented it to you, I think it was, um, negative 60-ish, I believe.
No, I thought it was 70, but something, it was somewhere around there.
Good job, good job, good job!
So we did get, um, look at this cover sheet, look down the proposed 22, 22, 23 column, you'll see the zero at the bottom, that means the budget is balanced. So it matches do match up with all the revenues that we anticipated. Um, again, this front sheet is just a synopsis of all the detail sheets that we're going to go through, so we're going to flip the page over to the revenue detail. We did get the valuation letters back from the county, so we did slightly increase. If you look at the estimated actual to the proposed 22, 23 numbers, um, slight variations there, so we did actually have an increase in revenues. Additionally, going down to unrestricted, we had a increase in revenues based off of North Carolina League of Municipality projected increases percentage-wise, so we basically took what we estimate from the end of the fiscal year that we're currently in, plus the North Carolina League projections that they have estimated across the state.
What do we differ as?
We, what the?
Projections or?
We go, we go.
Parts and bouts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jamie, do you remember what beer and wine was 1.75 in excess? And then we actually didn't even touch utility, the utility sales tax. We kept that across the board the same. That actually probably will increase, but we didn't, that's one of those variables we didn't know for sure. And then the local sales and use tax, do you remember what that increased?
Yeah, can you describe that? Look like that.
So she's going to go get that. We'll keep going down the list. Power bill, you'll see it actually a negative. We had 197,000 this year, we're going back to 147. The reason being is that they had some type of additional appropriation in the legislature's office this year that was just one time, I think it was COVID-related, so we did get more money this year. We're obviously not going to spend all of that, so it will go back into fund balance reserve. Thank you. The estimated projected increase for local sales and use tax was 3.75%. This year that we're in now, they had projected a roughly 10% increase from the previous year. Any questions on any of that? So what we'll do based off of these projections is we will monitor expenditures as they come in, we'll look at revenues as they're coming in, making sure they're matching up with the projections, and if not, we will, you know, not do larger projects to take into account lesser revenues received.
I mean, the projections are pretty, are pretty on point, have been in the past career.
They have, yes.
When do you get those numbers, like throughout the year?
It depends on what it is. So the beer and wine, beer and wine, it looks like we get in May of every year.
Okay.
Sales and use, our sales tax, we get that every month, and then the utility sales, we get it quarterly.
Hee-ki-dee-ki.
Moving on to zoning permits and development fees, this is, uh, we're still working on these numbers. If you look at the estimated actual, it has 1,700 listed here, we think there's a, an error in where we're coding some things. Development fees are basically when we, so AMT, you'll notice in the expenditure section of planning and zoning, when we get to that, you'll have a pretty high increase of, not increase, but you'll have a pretty substantial number for engineer costs, I think it's around the tune of $80,000. Basically, what we do is we pay our engineering bills out of planning, and then we get reimbursed for those development fees from whatever the developer is. So it's kind of an offset. There obviously are larger needs that are not applicable to one particular development, and that's why we have an increased difference in the revenue minus the expenditure, and that's why I'm in planning and zoning, which we'll get to. If you look at sales and service, we basically increased a couple of things based off of us getting out of COVID, people are using the park more often, we've got the picnic shelter there that people are utilizing, professional passes, we're still seeing, you know, a lot of those coming in, garden plots, and then we also increased substantially from the prior year in contributions and sponsors because we anticipate Marvin Day being kind of similar to what we're seeing now. We're also putting in a $1,500 revenue for village hall rentals, you know, we don't know what that's going to be, we just kind of put that in there just to play with the number, it could be more, it could be less. Investment earnings, we've pretty much kept that the same since I've been here, if I can remember correctly. We haven't touched that in years. And then you have your miscellaneous revenues, which really consists of that fee and low money that was from bar craft, I believe.
Which one?
Bar and bail group. The 8,600 for fee and low. And then we have solid waste fees coming in at 468,000. That's, and we'll have to go over this later at the June, I'm sorry, at the May meeting because we do have to adopt the fees for next year. I'm not projecting any changes in the fees that I had initially told you guys back when we started this program, which was $244 a year. I don't think it's going to be any more than that, however, I will say that because of fuel being so high right now, we are seeing a fuel surcharge, and that actually applies to the bills that we're getting now per the contract. It was a six-month look back from the date of when we awarded the contract to them, so as of day one, we did start seeing a fuel surcharge. Now, it's not a huge amount of money, I think we'll be able to absorb it, but as we go on and the bills keep coming in, I'll have to just update you before the year closes out. So we shall see. I did budget internally in our projections for the rates for fuel surcharge, however, I have not relooked at it to see if it matches up with what we're seeing now, and it still could change, it's one of those variables.
Can I go back to the miscellaneous? Are we not doing any money for March, or are we pulling it from someplace else, or are they not asking for anything?
So this, this is just revenues, so unless we project any revenues for March?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What does the donation?
Like any donations to them?
Uh.
Like if you want to donate a hundred dollars, then we know. So we, we have never really planned a?
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I was not reading that correctly.
No debt proceeds this year, so that's not listed there, and then we have no projected fund balance appropriation. Any questions on revenues at all? Moving on to page 30, which is general government. You've got your salaries listed there, um, we're having no temporary intern. This is converting the finance officer from part-time to full-time. Aside from that, in general government, there's no changes in hours committed. You do have a rough, roughly 10% increase in bonus slash merit, 7% COLA, 3% merit. You do have, um, let's see.
Where did we get the 7% COLA from?
I looked at the CPI and that, well, I did that when we first started the budget process, and it was around six, it was hovering around there. I have not looked at that since then, so that's something I need to go back and look at.
I'm not, I'm not questioning it, I'm just trying to figure out where we got it from.
And when we come back for you to approve this, I'll have that CPI print out, just so y'all can see it. And the CPI is, is just for those listening at home, it's Consumer Price Index, and it basically looks at the cost of things that have increased over the course of however many months that we look at, and it gives an average. Um, let's see.
Huh?
7% might be low. Whatever, I think he's calling up.
Well, would it come out today, 8.4?
Yeah, it was 8.5.
Today, actually, I think the CPI, a new one came out today, if I'm not mistaken.
Eight and a half percent, I believe.
It was 8.5.
Well, it's good, I like that. Love spending more money than I need to.
Yeah, I think they come out every two months, if I'm not mistaken, or every three months, so the, the latest one I looked at was around six. This got your stipends in there, there should have been no changes in those stipings, stipends. Same for PRG and planning. Health and dental insurance actually had an 8% increase. Relatively low because last year, I think we had a decrease, if I'm not mistaken. And then short-term disability life, all that remained the same. Retirement has gone up this year, the ligers actually went up, I think about 1%. That's a required match that they require local governments to put in for each employee. Let's see. FICA, all that's calculated, all of that, the rest of the stuff is pretty much generic, automatically calculated based off of workers' comp, unemployment. Any questions on any of that, up to professional services? Okay. Moving on to general government, professional services, you have your attorney in there, the retainer, and hourly, he has not gone up this year, so we're thankful for that stability. The accounting services, if you recall, about a year ago, we hired a accounting CPA firm to help us through our first audit process without our tenured finance officer, Chris Robertson, who left about two years ago. They helped us a lot in our preparation for internal statements, internal finance statements. That's really all we're going to use them for this year. We feel comfortable with the process, and we're, we've toned that down to the tone of $12,000. Last year's request was 20,000. We've used them quite substantially this year, but we feel like we're not going to need them as much next year. The audit contract slightly increased based off of our new agreement with them to the tune of $250. I will say there may be a slight chance there's a increase in this that may happen when the audit process takes place, reasoning being is the acceptance of the COVID fund. When we expend a certain amount of grant dollars within a year, there's a different type of audit that's required, and if they have to do that, which we don't think that they're going to have to do in this year, but if they do have to do it, we will have to change this amount slightly.
What's the cutoff number for that?
I think it was like, it was something pretty high.
Over?
Yeah. I don't, I don't remember exactly.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because, you know, um, we've got that other grant that we're having to match, so if we.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's true, that's a good point.
Keeping it as, you know, if we know where the max is, we don't spend more than that in one year, then we don't have to take the extra expense of the extra audit kind of thing. We do it stages.
Yeah, we can look in, I think you're right, Jamie, I think it was 500,000, but we'll look into that, we'll try to stay under it. Let's see, we weren't at professional services.
$500,000. For, um, a single audit, it's 750,000 in federal grant expenditures for, we should read.
In one year, no. In one year. Yeah.
So.
And it wasn't much, it was like a $2,000 increase?
Yeah, it wasn't a lot.
Um, let's see, qualification of ordinances, that's just requirement, computer consultant. We booked him up slightly just because we, I'm sorry, no, we didn't. We estimated actual low, I must have bumped him up last year. 25,000 for professional services, so in here, we have $15,000 for a communications consultant, and I also put another 10,000 in for a salary study if we decide to do that, or some other type of professional service. We don't, we don't have to necessarily earmark it for a particular use right now, we'll have to come back for an appropriation for, not appropriation, but for a approval on any type of contract anyway, so.
Didn't we already do a salary study?
We did not, we did a.
Qualification study.
Yeah, qualification.
So didn't have salaries?
They gave, they gave suggested salaries, but they basically earmarked us wouldn't like municipalities, they didn't like delve into the exact detail of what we do. They, that study was basically looking at if we're adequately sat. They did do salaries, but it wasn't a detailed synopsis of it. And we don't have, we don't have to necessarily do one, we can come back to that. Union County contract for collecting our taxes is estimated around $13,000. And then aside from that, all your membership dues for professional organizations that we're part of. Any questions on any of that? All right, moving on to page three of general government. Training, travel, books, all that remains the same, we still have the earmarking there for tuition assistance. And that's one of the benefits that we offer to employees, and no one's taken advantage of it yet, but we have that earmarking there in case they do. Let's see, we have the council board retreat at $5,000. I know there's been some discussions about doing off-premise retreats, and if that's something that y'all want to, to seriously entertain, we may look at increasing that number.
Yeah.
Where are you going to go?
Well, I mean, we, we just briefly talked about Old North State, I mean, they got, they got nice cottages up there, it's away, I mean, that, that.
It's what they used to do years ago.
So I go to Firethorn every day, that's not a retreat for me, that's a, I have to see people I don't want to see.
I agree.
Okay. And as soon, and as soon as we leave there, staff comes right back here to a place they, they come every single day. Let's, let's not call it a retreat, let's just call it a extended work day.
Off-site work day.
Well, yeah, and maybe if we invite.
Field trip.
County commissioners, we won't bring the entire staff.
As far as I'm concerned, that won't, that won't happen again. We got, we got the bad end of that.
Yeah.
But I just think it's something, I mean, when companies, when they do retreats, they goes, they, they, it's a treat.
They retreat, they retreat.
Right. It's something that they get to. And listen, I'm, I'm just saying Old North State because we talked about it, but, and it doesn't have to be that, but it should be something that we can go and decompress and talk about stuff as opposed to just, just my two cents.
Well, I will say, Old North State, they actually do discounted rates if you do it during the winter season because it doesn't get utilized a lot during that time period, so if we want to do an off-premise retreat, Old North State is actually pretty good. It accommodates you in a terms of, like, you can have a meeting space, and then you have accommodations to sleep at night.
That's in New London, right?
So it'd be, we'd be going into a two-day, a night and overnight.
Be a weekend.
Yes.
That's okay.
Now, can you pronounce that slowly, what is it called?
Old North State.
Old North.
Oh!
Oh!
Old, my God!
Old North State.
That's, that's North Carolina's nickname.
It's gated.
I'm going to ground you.
It's gated.
Sorry, Dad.
Absolutely, absolutely gorgeous.
Where is this located?
Middle of the state, it's an hour and a half from here.
Stanley County.
What'd you say?
I thought it's in Montgomery County.
No, it's in Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
Almost right outside of Stanley County.
But it's a.
It's off of Baden Lake, it's nice, it's nice.
It's getting close to my neck of the woods.
I know what Baden Lake is.
It's right by Baden, okay.
Absolutely gorgeous.
Is that something, y'all want me to entertain? We got to play golf?
I don't know if you want to.
But here's the only thing bad about going to Old North State, there's, there's no cell service.
Yeah, there's not.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
That's actually good.
They've got internet, I mean, you got internet.
We'll look into that and we'll get some quotes and we'll readjust the numbers.
Okay.
Let's see, liability.
But that's what they used to do years, right before me, I, I never went off-site, but before I came in.
I'm not saying that, but I'm.
Makes sense!
So the liability and property insurance, I did increase that about $5,000. I honestly don't know what it's going to be based off of insuring the new village hall, so this number may have to change, we won't know until we can actually get them to go out and walk through.
Your 9,000 was, was the liability, no, it wasn't any profit, was it?
The park.
Oh, the park.
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking about that, that you. You can find out, you can get a quote to whoever you insure.
Yeah, yeah. We, I mean, we're like this close to being, they're, they're coming to do a walkthrough, and so once they do that, they'll, they'll let us know how much it's going to be. I think we've already got it scheduled.
I would think it would go more than that, because you add a million dollars plus to the policy.
Well, we may have to adjust this number, and as you're getting ready to see, I've got some, some free money in here that we can pull from.
Free money?
That's the best kind of money.
So moving on to manager discretion funds.
Your salary. Nothing free, oh, Dad says nothing free.
I've got managerial discretionary funds in here at 22,000, and that's basically the free money, if we need to pull from somewhere, we'll go there.
Christine is free money.
For me doing Santa Claus in perpetuity.
And just to note, for those listening at home, I can't spend this money on anything I want to, I have to come back to you all for appropriation of rule on that, it's just earmarked there. Bank copiers, meals, mileage, all that stuff is pretty much the same, it's pretty standard across the board. Any questions on any of that? Software supplies and phone, Smart Fusion, that's our tax database as well as MyGovHub. This is something that we had to do when we actually collected taxes, and we're still in that interim process where we have to maintain a tax number for, I think it's, I think it's a period of 10 years, and we're still in the process of transitioning over to what, to a database that we can maintain for delinquent taxes. So this number will eventually go away, it's just we have to keep it here now for state compliance. Agenda formatting, that is actually the eScribe, the platforms that you have on your iPads, where, if you recall, we're pulling that from ARPA funding, so you're not seeing that in the budget. The archive social is something that Austin brought forth a few months back.
That was, archive social was back in 2020.
Okay. So it basically archives a lot of the social media posts that we have.
Very handy to large public, if they want requests.
So this agenda formatting, you will see increase in subsequent years, just not anytime soon because we're going to pull it from ARPA. Other software, QuickBooks is in here. We are transitioning over to the new Tyler Technologies, which is the new financial software we purchased with ARPA funding. This will be an annual cost of around $30,000, so just so you're aware in subsequent years, you're not seeing it here, but you will see it once the ARPA funding is, is done, which should be in about three years. Cell phone, internet, cell phones, all that's estimated around $20,000. We've got our website costs in here. And basically everything else associated with technology. Any questions on any of that?
Our new funds are fan see.
They are, the little hole.
They were the only first people there working all day today.
And then we have, have debt service for village hall at 105,000. This should, if I'm not mistaken, I think it starts going down next year.
Yes.
Facility maintenance, that's for anything that goes wrong or that we see pop up that we want to fix or add to village hall. We had to put a number in here, so we just started with 5,000.
For the ceiling, for the ceilings in some of the rooms?
When, when does, when does our last payment due for the house?
You're going to see a budget amendment tonight for the next month.
Hopefully just April, yeah.
Yeah.
For what?
For year. For year, I mean, because we've used all of that, out of that account, so removing number, extra for rent and any repairs.
So we're not paying rent for May?
We should be done in April, hopefully.
April, I think, was paid on the first, I can get four.
What was, what was, what are our contracts stated, we have to give a three-month notice, six-month notice?
We're on a month, a month right now.
Month, month, a month.
So just moved over and after one, two, four months.
Okay.
All right, um.
I'm going to blow it in.
That was the time to sell your house.
You said you were going to downside, you know, a guy that gets your rent, good deal.
Yeah, you got some good neighbors, of course.
You'd be right in the heart of it.
Yeah. Sit out there with a chair and a cigar, my boxers. Welcome to Marvin.
Wow, okay.
I need to unsee that.
Capital Outlay, we have just a few computers with that in here. $4,500 and then just $1,000 for miscellaneous.
Is that going to be enough with like extra filing cabinets and stuff that you guys need?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure $1,000 is going to be enough, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to buy that in this year with some of our, okay, village hall. All right, just a second. Any questions on general government?
Highlight ARPA, just in case.
All right, moving on to planning and zoning. Okay, so we do, okay, moving into planning and zoning, you do see an increase in the salaries listed here, one of the reasons being for that is that we did take out the code enforcement contract, which was $11,000, so I did adjust the salaries here, and because Hunter will actually be absorbing those duties, and there's an increase in his salary due to that increase in duties. No zoning assistance being requested. Same bonus and merit that you see in other organizations, the other departmental cost, same health insurance, life insurance, and all that stuff, everything else remains the same that we've already discussed in general. Professional services, you'll see the engineering costs that I'd mentioned when we were talking about revenues, you see the 77,000, that again goes back to, some of this will come back in from developers, not all of it, but some of it will, but that's where our AMT bills come out of. Engineering other, I put a note in this section, Cancel actually adopted a resolution back in 2020 that was a stormwater study program, that was for a build grant, so this is a, a match for that build grant if it comes to fruition.
Not a long time ago.
Planning and zoning consultant, you'll see a massive decrease here, Hunter's been doing really well and able to absorb his, his task, and he's kind of come to the end of the need for the MHD district with the consultant, so he's going to.
Is that Tom?
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, we have a lot of hours banked up right now.
He's going to back off of that contract. Urban Forester, that's just the contract we have with the county. And then the code enforcement, you see the 11,000 that was budgeted last year, it's calm this year.
Does, uh, does that urban forester, that, does he have a limit that we can use him for that month?
I don't think so, I think it's just basically like a mutual, like a.
Good, I'm going to get a mortgage worth then.
I'm sure like his organization probably tells him to like manage his time wisely on that, but yeah, I mean, it's.
And then the operating expenses are pretty much the same as last year in addition to the membership fees. Any questions on any of that? Moving on to public safety. We did receive, we did receive a letter back from the county, and this is what they estimate, the contract being is $223,000. Obviously an increase from last year, which is to be expected. This is still not the final number, they give us a estimate beginning of April, and they say this is what we think it's going to be, however, upon a budget adoption, it may change slightly. That actually happened this year, if you recall. That actually happened this year. If you recall, we did a budget amendment shortly after the budget was adopted for a fifteen hundred dollar increase in what was actually the differential.
Don't I know like when budget season ends to get this stuff in?
We did not put the off-duty control, traffic control in here. We had initially said we were gonna pull it from ARPA. So we could still do that later. If y'all decide to pull it all together, it, it doesn't matter in this, in this annual budget because it's either, it's gonna come out of ARPA regardless, so it's not budgeted here in the annual operating budget. Regardless of what you decide at a later date on funding it or not.
We have, we have the money to do it.
You don't, yeah.
What did we budget for?
Around forty, fifty thousand dollars annually.
God, I thought that was higher than that, but I'm, I'm gonna go with what you tell me.
It, it's supposed to be higher than that because they, they had given us a minimum, I think it was three hours. When we, when we renegotiated the, the hours and the two officers and all that stuff, it was supposed to be around eighty thousand dollars because they had a three-hour minimum. But we ended up negotiating with them two hours upon us enacting the contract with them or the change. So they honestly could come back and say, no, you gotta go with a three-hour minimum and it's gonna increase it, but.
Okay.
The fees have just gone up a little bit because of how we pay them. And we have to use their roll call system, which has added two dollars and I think fifty cents per shift, per hour that we have to add on. So now we pay through their system instead of cutting a check for each deputy.
So it's an extra ten dollars per shift then? If it's two fifty per person, per hour, per shift?
It's something like that. We have that on the.
Which that adds up.
Probably still probably worth it from cutting all those checks.
It is nice. It does. It's, it's really cut down on a lot of time. Just ACH on their money. I review their timesheets. You can make sure every shift is booked right on their website. It's really nice.
The operating expenses, you'll, this is hopefully the last year. You'll see the light tower rental. This is for those off-duty people.
Can't we move it from ARPA? Isn't that part of?
We can, yeah, we can.
But it's like six one way, half dozen the other. It's coming from, I mean.
Well, it's not coming out of the, out of this fund though. It would be coming from ARPA just like the officers if we have to actually cover it. But, you know, maybe somebody will pony up a little bit of money, but I'm not hopeful.
And then the miscellaneous tools that I've mentioned to you all that Mason and Tommy wanna get for helping people. Change your tires. Any questions on that? All right, moving into transportation.
I'd rather buy a pickup with that six thousand dollars for Tommy and Mason than spend it.
It's five hundred dollars.
I'm saying the six thousand dollars for the light tower, rather than something constructed.
Well, we're not gonna do it much longer anyway, right?
Wow, we'll see.
Talk to the state.
Pray that there's no hurricane.
All right.
Oh, shut your mouth. Just put it out there.
Moving into transportation, we have nothing in sidewalk construction and we may well actually consider putting some in there. Well, no, 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 I take that back. Let me get down. Street lights at roundabout, that's what we've had budgeted for some years now and that should be the correct number.
For current or?
This one down here, not that one.
For current, yes. To power the lights.
Twenty thousand in engineering costs associated with power bill. That primarily them helping us pay reports, address any issues that come up when we have miscellaneous repairs. So a little on the high end, but I'd rather it be high than too low. Road repair and maintenance, this is any little potholes that we need to fill throughout the time. There's nothing scheduled, so I've just got five thousand in here.
Okay. Is the, uh, in Marvin Creek, when you first go into it, the circle there?
It's not our roundabout.
It's not our.
It's not? Okay, good. Go ahead, needs repair.
Yeah. We went all through that last year and figured out it belongs to the state.
Even though they don't wanna claim it.
Marvin Creek.
Roundabout, yeah.
Let's see, stormwater, gutter repair and maintenance. So if you remember, last year we actually did a hundred percent of the curb and gutter issues that were discovered. So we probably shouldn't see much of this in subsequent years. Road resurfacing, I have in here at a hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is one of those areas where, this is one of the funds that, or departments, I should say, that the money has to be budgeted. And then if it's not used, it reverts back to a reserve. So this is kinda where I put all that money. You'll see on the comment section, I've got fifteen thousand in miscellaneous repairs, fifteen thousand in the greenway fog seal. And then whatever we don't spend out of there, which is estimated around eighty thousand, it's just gonna revert back to fund balance reserve. Now, if miscellaneous repairs come in at twenty, then that number goes down.
Okay, and that's miscellaneous reserve for, or fund balance reserve for power bill.
That we'll use at some point. And then we've got the street sweeper in there at two thousand dollars.
Are they doing it? Cause it looks like poo.
Yeah, they should be, but do.
I mean, it looks terrible out there.
Yeah, I saw a piece of sign out there today. I didn't have time to stop and pick it up.
And then we have the CRTPO dues. Any questions on any of that?
Always, always not, not working, Joe? Not doing it, cleaning up?
You need me, I'll get after it. I got time.
Wear a vest.
Safety first.
Moving on to parks and rec, you've got your salaries listed there. There's a slight increase associated with, again, Derek taking on additional tasks with Village Hall. And then we actually have some increase in lawn hours or lawn care. We did have ten thousand budgeted in general government for lawn care at, at Village Hall. However, the park staff is gonna be taking that task over, so we kinda bumped some of their numbers up to absorb what increase that's gonna be for them.
And they're gonna start as soon as we get the C-Hub? Cause it looks terrible right now.
Basically, everything's the same for the longevity health, short-term disability. Workers gone up. Retirement. Any questions on any, anything in salaries? Community outreach, this is where all of your events are. We've estimated twenty-seven thousand in total event cost. That's for National Night Out, tree lighting, spring, Marvin Day.
Going forward, I'd just like to see if, you know, if we're successful with this Marvin Day, then why couldn't these events be sponsored by individual companies then?
They can. And that's what, that's what Park Truck and Green was actually talking about doing for National Night Out. Instead of getting hamburgers and hot dogs, we're talking about getting a food truck and having a company sponsor it.
Right.
We're, we're.
Just, you know, I mean, how much would that, what is the total amount there, thirty-year? I mean, it's, you know. Cause there's companies out there who wanna do it.
I know, we're, it's, it's a great idea and we're, we're talking about it.
I'm an idea guy.
Poor John Beres, that shouldn't have to sweat in front of a girl all night.
No. We don't have spring movie night, but we are gonna do a Halloween event. It's gonna be a fall.
Spooky movie night.
This year?
Yeah, it's gonna be barn or treat, baby.
I will not be here.
Why?
Moose hunt.
You're not gonna be here for Halloween?
I know. It's almost this cardinal sin.
Oh, my gosh.
You gonna bring the moose back? Bring a roos and a real deer, both.
Just title it that.
Yeah.
I'll just put movie night.
Yeah.
Any questions on any of those? Okay, membership dues, pretty standard.
If I need money for something else, what do I do?
What do you mean?
Cause we're talking about doing another, like a, like a beer and bourbon event.
Get, get sponsors.
I know, but I'm just asking. If I need money, cause I'm hoping that like people buy tickets for it.
Technically, she's got free money, I forgot.
Technically, all the money is under events. It's just line item there for you. Like those are all subcategories of four years.
So we zero one, just move it around.
Got it, pretty much.
So where do you have that, like a firestorm or something?
At the park.
I didn't think we were allowed to.
You can get a one-day alcohol permit. Come on, Joey. Or Village Hall.
I mean, we allow, we allow it by our word and since the system is special.
Are we gonna allow that for Marvin Day?
No.
That might be a little much for Marvin Day, but we can do a special.
We have not talked about alcohol.
Let's not broach that subject.
So, let's see.
We need Jamie to be able to speak clearly.
Don't talk to the walking traffic.
Blue or clearly?
All right, sorry, sorry. Park operations, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go over the total. You'll see the total in this year's budget is twenty-two thousand, roughly, twenty-one, one-six-one. You'll see an increase up to basically thirty thousand dollars. So it's roughly a ten thousand dollar increase in park operations. This is just standard cost of living increases and things have gone up. And then the additional that we have tried to put in there for like fertilizer, mulch, that sort of thing that Village Hall is gonna take. Any questions on any of that?
What doesn't cost anymore?
No, keep going.
Okay, moving on to vehicle.
Me, us, we don't cost anymore, Joe. Our, our stipends didn't, certainly else went up, but our stipends. We don't cost anymore than we did last.
Can I get a call out of mayor entries?
Yeah, really?
Oh, they're gonna use that soundbite. It's fine. It's all fun game, man.
So on vehicle and equipment, and equipment rentals, is, is that, does that include the, the payments for the truck?
No, we pay cash for the truck.
Truck's paid off.
Why you need it?
Uh, no, I just.
Rental.
I couldn't remember, no, I couldn't remember. I thought, I thought we did, but I was like, eh.
What is, what's the load charge? Pick, picking trucks are expensive right now.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they put that in, they may not use it, but if they need a piece of equipment, they have it in their budget to be able to make something.
Well, he wants a new mower.
Yeah, but I'm saying that the rental, it says equipment rental, there's money line, line item for, for if they need it.
So, hang on one second. Okay. Yeah, okay, park operations, vehicle, yeah, operating expenses, it's standard across the board. Training, travel, books, gas, all that good stuff. It's pretty, pretty standard. It's gone up two thousand dollars more, primarily associated with gas. Any questions on that part? And then greenway loop and park projects, this is the area where we take what's in his requested CIP and we try to put it in here for whatever we can. This actually includes a hundred percent of his CIP requests for general government. It does not include CIP requests for greenways and trails. And y'all gone over that CIP a couple of times. I can't remember exactly what's on there for next year. But it's in your consent agenda that's coming up at the next meeting. Any questions on any of that?
Nope.
At one of the last budget meetings, I think Kenton and Warpman had requested to do a capital reserve fund for planning on vehicle, not vehicle, but lawn mower costs over the next couple of years. So I did.
Replacement, so if we say to replace it as it wears out during the, you know, time it's in service, we just put a little bit of money back. So when it wears out and it needs to be replaced, we have money.
So I have not sat down and figured out exactly what it's gonna cost in terms of how long we're gonna have them, how much they cost. I have not had time to do that, but so what I'm doing in this budget, as I've already done, the ordinance for the capital reserve accounts and I earmarked five thousand dollars in there during the fall, when we've, we've settled down a little bit, what we'll do is go back and figure out how much money we need every year. This, this starts the process.
That process, there's a lot of stuff.
I will say when we, when we enact this ordinance, just so you're aware, when you enact a capital reserve fund, you have to spend whatever dollars in there on the capital reserve project. So it, we'll, we'll start it with, I think the way I wrote, wrote the ordinance was for vehicle and equipment maintenance and repair or something like that. But if for some reason we decide that we want to purchase another vehicle or, or something, then we can.
What? I'm asking.
Then we can, we can use that money for that purpose, but we can't take that money out and put it back in the salaries or anything like that. It has to go for a capital project.
Can we just not do a little pot then? Like a little honey pot, like Pooh Bear?
That's what we're talking about doing, just put it in a pot.
I know, but if it's a capital thing, then it has to be used for that. So can't we just put it in a little?
Well, it will, that's the whole point. So it has to be used for that so that when, when it comes time to replace a five thousand dollar mower, there's.
I guess we're always gonna have to replace that, so.
It's always.
But you could use it, I mean, you could use it at par, you could use it on anything that's got a capital purpose. Like it doesn't have to be for that one.
Okay.
Yeah, when the stuff wears out, the truck is eventually gonna wear out. It's gonna have to replace somewhere down the road. And it's gonna cost twice as much then as it does now, probably.
You basically can't, you just can't take that money out and put it in the operating expenses to pay. Any questions on any of his particular ones? Okay, moving on to solid waste.
Stop it. Stop it. You are, I already gave you your free one time today. You can do it again tomorrow.
Again, y'all have heard this bill a ton of times with solid waste and how we've done this. The twenty-seven thousand dollars there that's earmarked for the governmental share of, of salaries. If you remember, probably six months ago, we had a discussion about using part-time staff, like hiring a new part-time staff or using existing staff and just reallocating some of their, their salary cost. And that's what we chose to do because it was cheaper. We will reassess that as things go on, but as we've started now, we're, we're doing pretty good. So we feel like we, we, we feel like we can. We feel like we'll be okay. But I do have this money earmarked here. It is double, it is double budgeted, so take our general government salaries, for instance. So we had myself, Jamie, Jill and Austin absorbing most of those solid waste duties, which was at a tune of thirty thousand dollars in prorated share of salaries. So that money's already budgeted in those, those people's original salaries. I've got it double budgeted here just in case something happens, we need to hire someone, we've got some fluff to play with here. So if we don't need it, then this will be a surplus where Kim can pull some money for a map.
Yes.
Any questions on that part?
On that.
So I did budget. Four hundred and seven thousand for the services. And it looks like I budgeted twenty thousand for surcharge. The last bill that we got, I think it was three thousand dollars in fuel surcharge. So that, that should be okay. We need to crunch those numbers out. They will be able to have a CPI increase. I think it's not, I can't remember the exact date, but I've got that listed, April first of twenty-three. So that's listed in here for three months of CPI. Any questions on that? That is it? Five minutes.
Good job.
Done early. Seven minutes, right?
You know what that means?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the. Kiana?
Yeah.
Do, does anybody have any questions for Christina before I do it?
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the budget work session at five fifty-four PM on Tuesday, April twelfth.
Some laws in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
You know what this means is what I was pointing out.